The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Just number two, the bridge contract contract is pointing out is 300,000 under engineers estimate. So rather than going the other way, we're going, we're going with this way. So all the business is very consistent and still maintain the testaments.
Citizen input. Thank you. The test board measure compared to citizen input and citizen will be allowed to address the county board one time up to three minutes and like comments should be directed to the board as a body. When addressing the county board, please state your name and address to the board. The board will take all information or advisement as part of the county board's call as acceptable by the speaker to sign or engage in character assassination at county board meeting. In addition, no more put the ground standing candidate endorsement. Other attempt to uncommunical election shall be permitted. Any violation of the above statement shall result in loss of your remaining time.
Thank you. My name is David Olmeyer. You know that 2020. Two, last few weeks I've talked about the white collar criminals are 1201s probably two that's in Terry's district. Now we're gonna shift up to Casey's district up there by their real township. This is an opinion letter I read, I wrote in outdoor news about nine years ago. DNR needs oversight, not money. In 2007, under the guise of restoring the creek that originally ran through the Sturgeon wall and rearing pond to free 1941 condition, the DNR gave itself a permit to destroy civilian constitution core built structure on the now defunct pond. The DNR selfishly permit said it built the rearing pond in 1941. Having reviewed more than 2,000 marginal documents during my career that remain, I have become fairly good at investigating, investing fraud and deception. I'm very good at that. Here's the truth behind the DNR selfishly permit. The rearing pond was actually built by the young men who CCC camp 717 on Sidely, which is under the US Department of Agriculture Administration. The rearing pond was conceived by the Chisholm chapter of the Idaho court league. The rearing pond was approved by my former professor, history professor Lloyd L. Smith, and the DNR approved it, a $26,000, $26,000 grant to pay for the labor. All right. The first document I want you to see, this is by Jeff Broughton. He gave that to me and I think he deserves a, an achievement award. That's something on the citizen. The second document that's in there, this is an LHB design for the reef, the watershed for that I tested under reply 27 was done for Dave Christie, who was engineering some years back. And so they did a design pool of two-year, five-year, 10-year, 25-year, 50-year, 100-year and 500-year events. And the DNR didn't do that. The Rajanites didn't do that. Also had a copy of a request for data for the DNR. This is regarding the fiduciary obligations for school trust land. You like that, Brett? And then I have before and after pictures. This is a structure that was destroyed. It's a CC built and it's not there anymore. You'll see what's there. And Jeff confirmed that I took pictures nine years ago. I knew that. And this is also the pond as what's operated by the Chisholm Sports Club. Rearing ponds are grainable ponds. This pond has no bed night on the dikes. It's not like it's a sewage pond. It rolls easily. That's why we drained it over here. The Rajanites did the last thing. This is the pipes that were designed by LHB, but the DNR had a two-year, two-year, called, they call it, it's called Rajanite. Does not work in flat streams. And so what's the consequences of that? They took that structure out. That's what's there right now. A beaver pond. It's been there for a long time. And the people that sell Sturgeon Lake, and I know are not happy. I'll tell you who they are another time. And this is the, this is the, that burst, the burst because too much water. You gotta drain them down. I, how much time do I got? Okay, thank you. I'll be back. I'm going to Nash watch with the city dog on the show.
Citizen input. Anybody else for citizen input?
How's it going today, guys? April 22nd of this year, you had a gentleman up here named Ken that told you guys that the data requests you guys are doing is not valid. The portal system isn't the only way by law for us to do requests. That is an option that you guys put installed for the county. The portal system is an option for us. State law 13.03 gives the people the right to do data requests via email, via person, or via telephone call. Portal system's not the only way we have to do the requests. You not fulfilling the data requests by email or just ignoring it because I have a litigation against you guys does not justify the state law. You guys are representing the constituents of Atasca County. Just because I have a litigation trial against you guys does not mean I, I'm not accepting the fact that you guys are not responding to me on anything other than the litigation. The litigation I have against you guys, I will fully accept you guys will not respond to me on. And I would not expect you to respond to me on that. And I've been in contact with the console of you guys on that matter. But you guys are obligated. John Johnson is my commissioner, and I've called him three times and yet he refuses to call me back. That's unacceptable. He is my commissioner. If I have other county items other than the litigation, he has to fulfill his duty as my commissioner. I was in the room two weeks ago in the hallway with Cory. He told me to get out of the building because he's not supposed to talk to us. And then he's, then he's on my Facebook page saying that I screamed at him and yelled at him. I didn't yell at him. Is this screaming at you Cory? Am I yelling at you? No. This isn't called insertive. Just because you don't like it does not mean I was screaming at you. Okay? And then just the other day, we had a citizen up in the courtroom, up at the court administration office, get threatened by arrest for a recording in public areas. The Constitution allows us to film anything we can see. There's case laws. Your attorney standing right there can tell you. Smith B. Cummings, Florida Dice versus Seattle, and Turner versus Driver allows us to record a public officials in the course of their duties. That's case law. Set case laws. I mean, if you guys want another lawsuit, we can go down that road too. I mean, this is ridiculous. I don't know. I'm turning around. Joe, I'm gonna go up there and record. Are you gonna arrest me? I, well, just, I'm gonna go up there and record. If you're gonna arrest me, arrest me. I will tie myself to your pension, Joe.
All right. I don't know if Bradley Cooper, anything to that performance. I'd like to say, I know we come and come with costumes and whatnot, but this is serious. As long as you guys are doing this, people come here. We're paid to do this. We're sticking up for a lot of people in Atasca County. It's only growing more and more every day. We're giving messages, all kinds of stuff. I got more, more people complaining about Casey, and Jacob, I don't know, Hopkins. I'm gonna go right down on the ground floor here. Skiles, we also, I got an interview for, I'm trying to get a, Tribble and I are gonna go up and try to talk to the court lady to see, because a lot of people are pointing fingers. So you know, we got Joe here saying that it's the judge's fault for their order about trying to record. And then I went up and I talked to Lisa, and Lisa was like, actually Brett Skiles is in charge of the building. And so I wanna go up and go up and talk to her about that after. And we're just getting the old, you know, the old Atasca County murderer ground, aren't we, Penny boy? I'm just sick of it. And we like to have you guys start actually talking to us, addressing us. I'm not a part of their little lawsuit. You could at least talk to me. Also, we don't really like the fact that you guys seem to not take care. If you see, you know, they have a recording, pass per posted it. Sheriff Joe Dosovich, go ahead, sue me. Sue me. You know what? Doesn't come out of your guys. Comes out of taxpayers. Atasca County taxpayers are paying this. You guys don't give, you don't give a rip. And that's just, just not a good way to run business. And I cannot believe that we have to keep coming up here and keep blasting you guys every beat. And why don't you start talking to us? The more you start talking to us, the more you start acting like adults and actually are reasonable. We're trying to be peaceful people here. We wanna just go fishing, have our kids, have our goats, whatever. Just stay off our back. I'm sick of it. Tribble's figuring out how to do Facebook Live. I've been doing obviously my stuff on Snapchat, TikTok, Facebook. And that's starting to public comment. How are we supposed to get public comment? I thought I had Teresa talk about, or Teresa was talking about that earlier week. You know, if we can't be here, if you have someone in a wheelchair, you gotta shut off public comment right after their lawsuit, you know? And now what if there's someone sitting at home that wants to talk? You know, they just send it to your email, get ignored, just like Joe ignored my emails for months about my data requests and still not getting my data, my exculpatory data? Is that on the prosecutors or is that Joe? I was talking to Terry before about Cassidy Villanue, Jake Foschold's office. Are they the ones sitting on my data?
Oh, we can't find it. We don't know where your data is. We got everything we have. We legally have everything we have.
We don't. We should be funny about our stuff. And I have backup because I recorded you guys while you're recording me. So I want you to show me, you show me yours, I'll show you mine. And I'm sick of it. And then also, yeah, again, how are we gonna, you know, you don't have the Zoom option. These Colerain's has a Zoom option where people can come in and watch or, you know, from remote. So we'd like to see that option for people as well. Because I think everybody deserves to have a voice here in Atasca County. And you guys are, I heard of allegedly like really, really close to bankruptcy. You guys are running this place into the dirt. And yeah, I ran out of snap and that's ruined me up. But thank you. Have a nice day.
Okay, let's go up there. Okay, guys, we're walking up to the court administration building. I am a word. My word is my word. If they wanna arrest me, they can arrest me.
I'm gonna do my own talking. If anybody wants. All right. I already did a post check to check the organs out. They're not organs. I was hoping that they still have, and I do have a picture of it. It's in the background here. You know, I'm gonna shut my video up as long as it was working.
Oh, yeah.
So I went upstairs before the meeting, talked to my court administration, said I wanna have a coffee with Jessica to figure it out. She's not in, so she's supposed to call me, but I have another call. So maybe I'm just supposed to sit up there and maybe figure it out.
That sign is unconstitutional. They can't force you.
What is that? Yeah, does it even say in the area? I just, I noticed that too. Or no, it says no cell phones or whatever. Oh, my bad.
No, go ahead. He said the second floor?
Uh, I know the elevator. Actually, or paper? Oh, sorry. If you go on the first elevator, it takes your right to it. But if you go on the second elevator, you gotta go downstairs.
So three and three R. So three.
So they're trying to say both floors are three. I mean, this is another whole, this is another whole sign.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Oh, that's a courtroom. Where's the court administration office?
It's right down there. Hold on a second. But yeah, so according to John, you can be in any one of these hallways.
Yeah, as long as it's not a courtroom itself.
Are you reconnected?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just wanna be a professional tour guide here. But see this here, so this is the, this is what they're calling three. And then three R is up there. And there's I think three more courtrooms up there. And then Zoom rooms are here. So as we talked about this, this is another question that I have for, for when they were telling me that I couldn't record when they were gonna arrest me the other day. So we have two Zoom room meetings here. So I was asking, can we still record behind closed doors in here? And didn't get a firm answer in here. So the other day when I was here, when it didn't record, so they want to arrest, put you on Friday, I was standing right about there. And then Lisa was standing here, kind of like this. And I was like, what's going on? And then I don't think the data request these cameras or whatever, but he was gonna say that, you know, you're gonna arrest me if I'm recording.
I'm gonna sit down for a second with my knee.
Right over here. There you go.
My knees are.
Got a little documentary going. Anybody that'll talk to us in the court. I didn't get any phone calls. Lisa's out for a few days. Okay.
Ask her if there's a magistrate available.
Is there a magistrate available? We don't have a magistrate.
You got a judge available for us to talk to?
Judge available that can explain it to us?
There was, yep. There was a order that was supposed to have been done by a judge, not allowing us to record. And I want, I wanna, if possible.
Yeah. Okay. So as typical, the judges don't talk to the public. I wanna make sure it follows the rules here. So, and.
They're public servants. They're elected officials too.
Yeah. I just wanna say these two ladies have been very, very helpful to me always. No matter, I mean, I know we're going through a lot here, but I don't wanna, yeah. Can I call your boss? Can you call your boss? Can you call Lisa and ask how to handle this? This is what I would do if I had employees that didn't know what to do in a situation like this as the owner. Okay.
Is there a judge available?
No, I guess judges don't typically talk to me. You want, hey, you wanna film it to my there?
Oh, I gotta sit down for a second. My knee, my knees bother me, so I have to sit down for a second. Yeah, this will be posted on my page. I'll go up there. I said I'll go up there and talk to you. I just have to sit by knees.
Take it back. And I think, whatever, we just be mindful of the ladies here. Whatever. I know we have technical jam. And we can put on the.
Being my fault is one thing, but they have to follow the Constitution.
But then we can go, I wanna go to Rice County. Ah, sorry, Rice County. They're also, they won't let you record in Rice County as well.
Let's remind you, they record us, but yet it's against the law, or it's not good for us to record them, according to them.
Um, but I would like to go to the prosecutor's office next. Cause remember I told you last time the video, then they took off, you know? I guess, so I'm trying, we're trying to figure out, as in our part, we're trying to figure out what can employees turn away, run away, whatever we can do so we're all following the same rules. Do you understand? So, I don't know how that works. We're still, we're figuring it out as we go.
Yeah. None of us are being rude here. We asked politely to see a judge and talk to a judge. The lady said that the judges normally don't talk to, to the civilians, I guess, which I think is kind of ridiculous. They are elected officials. They represent us. They're appoint, they're not appointed. They're elected by the people. Every, every election cycle, there's judges. The lady behind the counter there, she seemed like she was skittish about the camera, which I don't think is, she's a public figure. We'll wait and see what happens here. Like I said, they record us, but yet for some odd reason, Joe says that we could get arrested. So we'll wait and see.
Hey, Wally, wait. Can I hold your phone? Or are you guys, you guys wanna have a little meeting? I was gonna give, I was gonna show, can I just kinda help? Can I have your phone? Be careful here. Okay. As long as Robert's going here, I just wanna show while we're waiting here, just give everybody a tour. This is beautiful downtown Grand Rapids there. Looking out here, this is a pretty cool area. But this is the little public work area that I've been working out of for quite a while. Knock, knock. Nobody's in here, but these are the two computers that you can look up your court case. And then if you need to print off forms and stuff, that's right there. So Finn and I hang out in this room a lot. And then you can get stuff printed, transcripts, anything for free if it's with the courts there. So you can just go into that room there and print off that. And then I wanna talk about another thing too. Can I just keep talking? I don't see your live. Okay, while we're waiting here, while the transition was going on here, they did not, they used to have a public work area in the old courthouse. And during construction, I don't know, don't quote me on it, but it was like four or five months or maybe longer. They did not have a public terminal for me to use to look at my court cases. So, and you couldn't look it up at the library. And one thing a lot of people don't know at home is that there's a certain level of security. So the MCRO site at home, you can pull up certain stuff. But you get more stuff, you can print off more things if you actually come to the Minnesota, you gotta come to a courthouse computer. And so I was denied that right for, I don't know, four, five, six months. So I couldn't look up my court cases in the Rice County system that I'm having a big problem with. And it really made my cases much harder because I couldn't look up my cases. So just wanted to point that out. And, you know, they moved a couple of times. Court administration used to be down on a second floor. This is their final move here. Obviously, you know, construction going in and out. And this is actually an old building. I'm told repurpose it. You can see the old registers here and even the old blinds. These little blinds, but hey, uh, yeah, I don't know. Maybe I'll hand this back over. Oh, here you go. She got a customer maybe coming here.
Teresa, how are you?
Still good. Thank you for.
Good. How you been?
Yeah, how you doing?
Good.
Always have a good luck with this man.
Just for, what's your name and batch number? Batch number?
729.
729. Okay, body cam on?
No.
What's your, turn your body cam on?
Did we ask you to turn it on? Did we, did we, Tom?
What's that?
Did we ask you to turn your body cam on?
I don't need to turn it on.
Why?
Because I don't really need to record it.
What if we wanted it on?
But it is up to you. Aren't you a public servant though? Don't you serve the public?
Yep.
So wouldn't that be respectful to have it on? So.
Do you want me to turn it on?
Just, just for, thank you. I mean, just, just for the fact that, I mean, if you get, don't touch him. Just, just for the, just for the fact that, I mean, you're dealing with people and that's to save the taxpayers of the area.
Sure.
You know, that's the only reason why. I'm not being disrespectful or anything. So, so it's just the fact that, it just, yeah. And I like officers. I'm not anti-law enforcement, you know? But.
I'm heading this way, but.
Okay, so they didn't tell you?
No.
We always assume we're getting arrested or at least I do.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it.
But yeah, I think that's a good question because there's times like I want, we want stuff documented as citizens. So I think the cameras go two ways. You say, I'll do that. You know, like it's protecting them. And there's times like I wish Lisa would've turned his camera on here when he's telling me.
That's why they wanted him in the first place is protect them. They need to be on.
They should be correct both sides. Yeah. And this is, and this is what I've been advocating for many, many years, the ability to report, record at court administration here. Because we get a lot of different mixed stuff going back and forth. And when you're dealing with activist or biased judges, in my personal opinion, like Carrie Anderson and fortunately Sarah McBroom and Monica Chandler. I got another story coming out about that. That's also making me wonder whether she's really following the rules like she should. So that's another thing coming. But we wanna be able to trust our judges and we wanna be able to document, hey, you know, and I'm working against this, what I consider predatory attorney, Mary Hahn from Northfield, Minnesota. And I was just, relax. So I'm just gonna keep stealing the spotlight here. Predatory attorney from Northfield, Minnesota, always changing stuff.
Come over here. Yeah.
Okay, let me just point out, there's nobody else here.
Yeah, there's nobody else here, but.
If there was somebody here, I would totally.
You can't, you can't be disruptive though. By disrupting, you can get in trouble. But that's one of the stipulations. So, I mean, you can talk like this, but you can't, you know, just tone it down a bit.
We get amped up.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I know. This is our first deal, so.
Nah, that's our first rodeo here, but you know, let me try to talk a little bit more non-rule 20.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just, just, I mean, because they'll throw that at you. They'll use that as you being disruptive, you know?
No, I get it. You feel disruptive, ma'am?
No, no, but the people working, you can't, you know.
They could be on the phone and that's a very good catch.
Yep.
I'm here to bail you guys out.
Oh, yeah. So she's here. She's here to bail us out or to watch, care of Finn, right? Someone needs to watch Finn and Bailey too. Where was I going with this? Oh, so there's just a lot of trickery. Attorneys play a lot of trickery, a lot of last minute stuff. They give you papers, you know, these divorce family court attorneys like Mary Hahn, they'll serve you like at whatever. And I'm running down to court administration, trying to find the farms in a frantic panic, you know, in the past. And you hear one thing and you need to document, hey, judge, I tried. You know, Mary Hahn served me at four, you know, 29 on a Friday, and I got a deadline. So there's just, unfortunately, a lot of these predatory attorneys around Minnesota are doing that to people. And it's nice to be able to document that at court administration, that you're doing it best you can to try to keep up with some of these, we'll keep, we're gonna try to keep this kid, maybe gonna put kid, kid safe on.
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep it. We'll keep it.
Okay, you guys can talk or anybody else can talk. Talk too much.
Well, I mean, you're just pointing out some of the facts, you know? And we're just here, we're, we're just here to point out the hypocrisy. Jake was up here, what, a week ago? Oh, there she is.
Oh, media request.
Well, no, 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 no.
You're not the media, are we?
We're not, well, we are. We're journalists. But we, we're not, we're not, we don't wanna request. We're doing a constitutionally protected activity.
Well, I guess, you know, in the meantime, do you guys have that order that was on the wall that you took off after I posted my stuff on TikTok? Can you reprint it? Does that fair? I'll do that one. Why don't you, while we wait until your bosses, so who is this? Lisa? Or no, this is Kim?
No.
No, actually I wanted to see this because if we were technically the media, could we record it?
We are the media. The media is not defined as a certain agency. There's no government agency that gives you a media credential.
Okay.
The First Amendment to the Constitution allows us to record in public.
Okay, so we don't need to fill out a media request? Okay, yeah. While we're ready, she's gonna get a copy of the, the order that was on the wall. When, I don't know, I'm trying to have every episode have a name so we can go back. I don't know. What do we wanna call the one down there with Casper on the phone and all that, with Lisa and stuff? But after that interaction, immediately the thing was taken off the wall and I document it's gone. So we're gonna try to get that reprinted and then we can re. But after that interaction, immediately, the thing was taken off the wall and I document it's gone. So we're gonna try to get that reprinted and then we can re, read that while we wait to talk to someone to figure out the rules.
Yeah, the, there's no such thing as media credentials. I'm considered with my phone right here, considered the media. It, it doesn't matter. It's the, it's the people. Anybody, yeah. Anybody has free press, dude. That's the First Amendment constitutional right. That's not, that's, that's there if you wanted to do in court requests. In the courtroom, the judge has to, the judge has to approve it.
Okay.
This way the judge doesn't.
No, I want, I want to record my own cases.
Yeah, yeah.
I would love to have people record.
You have to.
I've been begging for this for a while.
But, but just because you have that does not mean the judge will honor it.
The judge isn't gonna sign it. She's just gonna use it to burn, you know, in her spear house.
But, but it's the, the point of the matter is, there's no such thing as media credentials. Anybody in the United States of America has the constitutional right to freedom of press.
I love the walking Constitution. That's why I'm hanging out with this guy.
The, the Constitution gives us that right.
Okay.
So as long as you're, there's a time, place, or manner restriction. Time? It's two, three oh two PM. Place? The Atasca County Court Administration. Manner? We're not disruptive. We're here doing a First Amendment protected activity. We're asking questions. If we were disruptive and anything like that, they have the obligation to force us out of here. But as long as we're sitting here peacefully recording and doing what is legally obligated for us to do, there's not a damn thing they can do about it.
Okay.
We have the right to record our government officials in the course of their duty.
You're really good at teaching us. You should do a class.
I haven't, I know enough to get myself hurt, dude. But, I mean, was she gonna send a supervisor out? Was that the next plan?
You know, let me just double check. Where are we at? Do you know? Oh, she's on the phone.
Yep.
They're watching me through their cameras.
Oh, yeah.
They watched me before I even get here.
Like in the casinos, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But what was it, like, uh, what was it, a week ago? Was it a week ago that Joe?
No, I mean, we go Friday.
Friday, Friday Jake was up here in the same place. And Joe Dosovich and Greg.
No, I'll tell a story because I was there. So I don't want to, so yeah, so I was standing here. I was just gonna get some, uh, remember how he was blasting me? Do you have any? And Casper was like, uh, duty, I don't know what was the word, uh, duty of the court or business of the courts or something or whatever. And like Casper pointed out, who is he to say what's my business here is not? I was here to get some forms, print off some stuff. And I was gonna, again, video it because I literally, I don't know how many days before, I already recorded it for what I'm calling Baghdad Gate. We'll get that one out once I get that one going on. But I was documenting that because I'm very frustrated in that case as well. And then that's when I saw Lisa come up and stand here about twenty feet away, like that, standing there like this, you know? And I was like, hello, can I help you? And he's like, what are you doing? He's like, you know? And that's what, I don't know if we could, I'm, I'm, nobody can, and this is another thing I've been testing, we can do a whole day talk. I mean, I'm so glad that someone's actually finding me holding a phone for me. But we don't know if there's audio. I think it's just video on.
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah, I don't know.
So I don't.
But the point of the matter is if they can record you, you can record them.
I was hoping we could get that so I could just.
Yeah.
Triple prove.
Yeah, yeah, if, if, if you put a data request in and ask for the Court Administration.
Where'd you get that? What is that?
On, on my phone.
No, you're watching it live on his phone?
No, this is a different time that you were here. Oh, it is me. Jesus, don't.
We're teaching her how to use this.
Were you?
Yeah, and I guess, and then anything that you can view like, uh.
Anything you can see from public.
Yeah, Casper talked about this in this.
Anything you can see from public, you can, yep.
So anything we can see public, we're not going through.
We can't go past.
Yeah, we're not going through the doors.
We can't go past any restricted areas, nor would we want to go past any restricted areas. Excuse me, ma'am, was you gonna, was the supervisor gonna come out?
Nobody wants to talk. Nobody wants to talk to you.
Nobody wants to talk?
What about me? Can anybody talk to me?
Okay, what, what, could you verify why they won't want to talk to us? Because we're recording or what?
No, 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 no. Hey, is there a way, I feel bad for her because she's a, is there a way we can talk to your boss that's on her? I mean, I hate when they put the little, the young one or the newer ones on the front lines, you know?
And so they, nobody wants to talk to us because we're recording? If I stop this recording, will they come talk to us?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay.
I can't speak while they don't want to talk to me.
Would you want to go ask them again? I would like to have a comment with my public official. That media request is for, that media request form is for the judge to do it in a courtroom. We're not asking to record in a courtroom. We're asking to record in the public areas that the people have the right to be in. Not closed off areas, not secured areas, this general hallways, general public areas. We want to know why that was such a big deal last week.
On Friday. Uh, Lisa, and yeah, and this is, it was Lisa. I think the girls would have been fine with it. It wasn't until it was a Lisa issue that I came up here. Or I don't know if someone told Lisa to come up here. But all I know is Lisa, so I would not put these people on the hook for Friday is what.
What, what's your name, ma'am?
I'm not telling you my name.
You're not gonna tell me you're? Well, I'll just do a Florida request and get you all your information. Okay. Okay.
Um, so yeah, I think this could catch everybody else up. They're, they're still printing off the, the order, uh, Robert, the, that was hanging downstairs.
Okay.
Hey, I guess, you know, you know.
Come over here and keep it down lower.
So like at Perkins, I used to work at Perkins for many years as a server. And they'd have what we called secret shoppers. And you didn't know who they were. And they'd come in and they would, you know, see how your service was. And, you know, rate the food and everything, the atmosphere. And then you get a report. And nobody ever wanted to have like a bad report because they'd hang it on the back wall and stuff. So basically, we're kind of like, uh, secret shoppers, but actually we're very overtly shopping here today, uh, explaining exactly what we do. But if we did it without, you know, Facebook Live and all.
Just remember, guys, these people work for us. They're, they're, they're funded, they're paid by taxpayer money. Um, with her not identifying herself, she is now at dereliction of her duty.
Hey, we got, we got a phone friend. We got a special guest. You're on Facebook, you're on Facebook Live and we're recording now. What would you like to say?
I would like to say that last week she refused your, refused you service. So she refused to do her job. She's a public servant. She's there to serve. You need to know who she is so you can file a complaint on her. You were doing nothing illegal. First, first amendment protected activity besides the fact that you were asking.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get, we'll get, we'll get all of her information via Florida request. And then we'll put in a data request. She's not gonna give it to us. They're not gonna, they're not gonna, they're not gonna do anything up here. They've already told us that they refused to, to come out and talk to us. Yeah, they refusing to come out and talk to us, anybody. The supervisors, the whole nine yards.
Are you, hey, are you not, are you not, hey, let me hold on. Are you not watching us on Facebook Live right now?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay, all right.
I was commenting, but I, you can't comment back, obviously. So I'm curious as to what is the reason that they're not serving the public?
That's what I asked for. And she said that she can't comment for them people.
So we'll wait to get an answer.
This gentleman is a thousand miles away. They're trying to.
Yeah, how's Florida? How was the temperature in Florida right now? Forty-two in Rapids?
About eighty-five.
Thank you.
But. But remember that this, these people work for the taxpayers of Atasca County. Um, all we're doing is asking for. Yeah, all we're, all we're. All we're doing is asking for public information. Um, we're asking for a suitable reason why, um, the recordings or whatnot. Um. She, by, uh, by not giving her name out, is violating policy. I'm assuming it would be, I'm gonna have to look that up. Uh, that could be, uh, Atasca County policy violation right there. Um, because I believe that most, most, uh, courthouses and whatnot, they, the public has the right to the identity of the people that's serving them. So.
Yeah, you know that one, Casper, phone a friend? I feel like, what's that TV show where you phone a friend and try to win a million bucks? Sorry. Uh, Who Wants to be a Millionaire? Remember that show, guys?
But.
Yeah.
Okay, I think, uh, I think we're done, actually.
No, no, she's gonna give us the form.
Is she gonna get the form? Okay, she's coming.
Hey, you want to stay on the phone or do you want to go back on the boat? Casper, are you still there? Am I just talking to, leaving up on me?
Yeah, you must. Or are you, are you there outside? Uh, service, one of the two. We're asking for, uh, we're asking, you're asking for that.
I'm asking for that, that policy, remember that was downstairs hanging on the wall? I just want to reprint of that. I can get you one. Yeah, I have one. Oh, yeah, all right.
Oh.
We're gonna go with him. Yeah, I got one, guys.
We're gonna go get the policy from what the court's, uh, judge. Judge orders? Yeah, but you realize that a judge's order is only good for their courtroom or their chambers.
He's just middle man.
Yeah, 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 I'm just saying.
I'm in the middle of all of you.
Well, well, yeah, but technically you're the one.
We got, yeah, Casper on the phone again.